Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the second monthly meeting of your Alamosa City Council. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. And with that, would you please stand with us and we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Judy? Roll call. Judy? Okay.
We do have a quorum. Counselor Johnson has requested to be excused.
Thank you, Judy. Next item is agenda approval. Do we have any changes, Judy, or modifications? Don?
I motion we approve the agenda and excuse Counselor Johnson.
Second. Judy?
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Judy. Next up, we have citizen comment. And the first card I have here is Commissioner Michael Yon. Commissioner Yon, we're privileged to have you here this evening. You and Richard Nagley?
Nagley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Michael Yon, Alamosa County Commissioner. A few years ago, it was brought to our attention that the veterans of the San Luis Valley in rural areas everywhere are very limited to their services and their voices being heard. And so, the San Luis Valley, as the San Luis Valley Commissioners formed a group to try to address some of the issues that's facing the rural veterans. And one of those issues is the health care in rural areas. The other is the voice of the veterans not being heard up the ladder and to the federal level where most of the services are delivered. So with that, we have been coordinated and then we formed the San Luis Valley Veterans Committee in addition to our county veterans officer. Each county does have a county veterans officer that supports the veterans, but this is in addition to it, trying to get the message out. And I think we've come a long way. Richard Nagley here is the vice chair of that committee. And he's been very instrumental in bringing a lot of continuity and getting the meetings together. And with that, he's got a big quarterly meeting coming up. And so, I'd like to introduce him. And I see that we have some female, or veterans with us that's on the agenda too. And I wasn't aware of that, but they will be speaking a little later too. But, you know, right now for me, I'd like to take a minute to thank all those veterans who have served. And if we could just take a show of hands of all the veterans here. Normally, it's like a 10 percent. And again, thank you for your service. Richard?
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, fellow veterans and neighbors. My name is Richard Nagley. I was going to introduce some of the veterans, which I realize now, I have some names that I would be missing. But since there was a raise of hands, I'd just like to introduce several. We have with us Dorothy Brant this evening, a World War II veteran, a very special guest. Jane Salisbury, Karen Limkey, Teresa Bell, and our mayor, Joseph Lucero, and Charlie Greco. Thank you very much. And as I said, I saw a few other hands out here. Thank you very much for your service. We're here this evening to tell you about an upcoming meeting that's going to be next week in Alamosa at Adam State with the Veterans Administration. They are coming down with the director and the high echelon to do their quarterly meeting here in Alamosa. We ask for your support. This is an open meeting for veterans, as the flyer says, veterans, spouses, family of veterans, friends of veterans, and those concerned about veterans. So it's going to be at Adam State in the banquet room, 0800, that's eight o'clock for civilian people, until 12:30. They can open the doors in the banquet room and keep opening them up. I think police officers probably tell us we can have about 400 in there. So if we fill it up, we'll have a chance to hear what the VA thinks we need and what they're going to do, but at the same time to talk with them. There's also going to be a special event. This is the 60th anniversary of the Korean War, the forgotten war. And Korean War veterans, we're reaching out and trying to find all of those in the valley because the Republic of Korea and the United States of America government have made a special book to honor the Korean War veterans. I have a copy here. So all veterans will be getting that. And if weather, health, whatever is a problem, we'll be sure to get the veterans' names. So it's an opportunity to honor veterans of the Korean War, honor your fellow veterans, have a little special time together. And I would encourage and invite any and all people to please attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Richard. Do you have any comments, Council, or questions from?
Mayor, I had a comment. This afternoon, Senator Bennett was in town from 1:00 to 2:00. And we got a chance to visit with him. And I did bring up the fact that we were having problems here with the health care and stuff. And he said that he was going to look into it and see what, you know, told me we were having problems with the doctors down here and stuff, and the appointments and all that. So he was going to go ahead and look into that and see, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. We are working with a pilot, on a pilot project that is we, the commissioners committee, has created a pilot project here in the valley with the Veterans Administration. It's the only one in the country. And this is trying to deal with issues where veterans don't have to travel all the way to Denver for a 20-minute or half-hour x-ray. Part of what the director is going to be telling us, since she is the one that makes those decisions, what new items she wants to add to that. So we've had a lot of support from Senator Bennett, Senator Udall's office, and Representative Tipton's office. They are very much on board. This is not just the valley's, it's the valley's opportunity to look for things in rural areas that can be replicated throughout Colorado to start with. So we will be having state commanders from the American Legion, the BFW, DAV, wounded warriors. There are other people coming from Denver here. So having a good turnout would be exceptional for us. Last time the VA came, they were disappointed, but they also didn't help us or tell us what was going to be happening or when. They've given us a little bit of lead time. And at this point, it's veterans calling veterans calling veterans to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty?
Yes, I saw the hands of many veterans in here tonight. And I just want to let you know that we greatly thank you for serving our country. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Anyone else?
Could you repeat that time and date again? Eight o'clock on what day?
It's going to be Wednesday, the 26th, at 8:00 until 12:30 in the banquet room at Adam State.
Very good. Thank you.
I brought 30 flyers, so.
Thank you, sir.
And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Yon and Mr. Nagley. We certainly appreciate the information you bring to us. It's very important. And I'm sure Council will do their best in trying to attend this function. I know I'm going to try to be there.
Thank you.
So, thank you again.
Thank you.
I don't think we're going to have any audience, I mean, follow-up on that. So we'll move on to ceremonial items. And Chief Dodd? Looks like you've got a mighty presence here today.
I brought my support system. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the community, and family and friends of Officer Brian Cooper and Ken Anderson. Tonight, we're here to recognize the promotions of Brian Cooper and Ken Anderson to the rank of sergeant. And to give a little bit of a background, if you were to survey law enforcement leaders, they would tell you that one of the most critical leadership positions in a law enforcement agency is the sergeant. And a lot of that has to do with, they are essentially in the middle of the organization, so they have great influence upward and great influence downward. And they truly need to have several certain qualities in order to be successful. And we have, as a command staff, we have to have a great amount of trust before we actually make those promotions. So when selecting sergeants in general, there's many qualities that we consider before making those decisions. First of all, does the candidate embrace and model the mission, vision, and goals of the community and the organization? And can he or she be trusted by our community and by officers? Second, does the candidate possess the requisite technical skills and knowledge? And has he or she demonstrated the ability to make tough decisions and lead others through crisis and through change? Third, is the candidate reliable, respected, respectful, positive, and already engaging and influencing others? And then lastly, does the candidate possess a can-do attitude? And can he or she effectively communicate inside and outside of our organization? In the case of Ken Anderson and Brian Cooper, the answer is absolutely yes. They do possess all of these necessary qualities in addition to many more. And so, I'm proud to promote them to the rank of sergeant this evening. Many of you know or have met Brian or Kenny during their tenure at the Alamosa Police Department or in our community. But I want to take a minute to reintroduce them to give you a little bit of an idea of their background before we do the traditional badge-pinning and give them an opportunity to say something to every one in the room tonight. First of all, Brian Cooper. Brian was born in Lahara and raised in Alamosa. He graduated from Alamosa High School and recently completed his associate's degree in criminal justice and plans to continue his studies and achieve an undergraduate degree. Brian began his law enforcement career in 2002 as a jail technician with the Alamosa County Sheriff's Department. He graduated from the Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy in 2004 and joined the Alamosa Police Department in 2008. Brian currently serves the department as a firearms range master, a SWAT operator, a field training officer, and he is a member of the investigations team in Honor Guard and instructs firearms at Trinidad State Junior College. Brian has been married to his wife, Kristy, for 16 years, and they have three sons. Ken Anderson. Ken Anderson was born in Oxnard, California, and graduated from Alamosa High School. Ken is a graduate of the Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy and has been employed with the Alamosa Police Department since 2001. He has served in several capacities as a Level 2 accident reconstructionist, SWAT operator, field training officer, driving instructor, and he is also a member of our Honor Guard and investigative team. Ken has a goal of completing his undergraduate studies and work toward an administrative position with the Alamosa Police Department. He has two sons and two stepdaughters and recently became engaged to his fiancee, Melanie. If Melanie and Kristy could join us up here? Ruth, are you going to want to take some pictures? You want to just come over to the center of the room? Kenny, why don't you?
Very nice.
All right. I was talking about leadership skills. Part of that is getting up in front of the public and speaking. So Kenny would like to say a couple of things to you.
I don't even know where to start. You know, just, I'd like to thank my family and friends for, you know, sticking with me for 13 years. It's a pretty big step in my career. Thanks to you guys for letting us have a few minutes of your time. Thanks to my administration, my fellow officers. That's about it. You know, thank you guys very much. I'll do the best I can to represent the city of Alamosa.
Ditto. I'd like to thank all of our friends and family for being here tonight, the City Council for their time. We've been given a great opportunity by the chief and our captains here to serve this community and look forward to working with everybody here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sergeant Cooper, Sergeant Anderson, we're extremely proud of your service and dedication to our city. And for that, I will give you a standing applause. Thank you. Next up, Council, we have consent calendar A, which is to receive January 14 expenditure report, approve minutes of the regular meeting, January 5, 2014, and to receive January 2014 monthly reports.
I motion we approve consent calendar A.
Second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll begin the voting. Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to regular business, we have a presentation from outside agencies. And we have Dorothy Brant in the audience, who will update us on programs for returning women veterans. Dorothy, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for this privilege of being here once again. It's a great honor. And we wanted to come back before too long. Ordinarily, we're not here this often. But we wanted to come back at this time and share with you. And I wanted to introduce to you Karen Limkey. It's going to say a few words. She's a veteran also. And we took Dr. Amir Obahat away from his duties tonight because we wanted him to be here special so we could honor him for what he's doing for us, helping us with his health work. And I do have two other veterans back here. One has a bad leg, a veteran, she didn't get a Purple Heart for it, but she has a bad leg that she did the damage. And Jane Salisbury and Teresa Bell. And so, we're glad to have them here with us also. And so, I'm going to let Karen go ahead and speak, if you would like to first, and then I will bring this up here.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here. And when Ms. Dorothy Brant asks me to speak on behalf of the women veterans, it feels a little bit like a direct order that I'm delighted to and honored to do. So a few months ago, Dorothy approached me and other women veterans and talked about forming this organization. And I'm really happy to be involved with it. I work at Adam State University. And I'm also happy to see the development of veteran supports at the campus as well. If I could speak just a little bit about that, I think we're seeing many returning veterans who are coming to college to use their GI benefits. And there's sometimes a disconnect between the academic community and the types of folks who go into the military service. So I think it's really important for us to do some asset-based recognition of the skills that people who are coming back from the service have. They're very organized, they're very motivated, they know how to work well in diverse teams. They want to get the job done and patriotic and have many good qualities. So we're also doing some work with our faculty development to help recognize some of the benefits of having more veterans on our campus. But with that said, I want to talk more specifically about the Women's Veterans Organization and just some of the things that we're already recognizing and doing to help support our community. And I know Mr. Yon and Mr. Nagley talked a little bit about the veterans' health benefits, which is extremely important. And I think especially women's health benefits that we were recognizing were not adequately being supported. And I think our group, which meets every, the second Saturday of the month, and, you know, everyone is welcome to attend at the museum, we've met half a dozen times, half a dozen months so far, and are recognizing different ways that we can plug into the community and do some supports. And this last time, there was an Adam State student, woman, veteran student, who came and talked about some of the challenges that she had navigating some paperwork. And just, I think we have a shared value system that I think is important to recognize that we want to help each other as women veterans, but we also want to help all veterans and it's kind of all citizens when we do that kind of work. And I'm going to wrap up with one more quick story that Dorothy shared with me about when she was in Germany. And she had a friend who said, you know, you're not like, you're not like regular Americans. And, which is sort of a curious thing because, you know, being a veteran is sort of maybe one of the most American things that you can do. But she was commenting about sort of her stereotype of what Americans are like, that we don't care for our elders the way we ought to, or we don't take care of our warriors the way we ought to. And we were having a conversation at a meeting a month or two ago about, well, we get to define our own values, we get to define our own culture. And for me personally, I think for all of us, the idea of reaching out and supporting each other is an important value. And if you want to think of that as un-American, that's your problem. I think we're going to define for ourselves the things that we care for. So anyway, I'm delighted to be here today. And I think, Dorothy, are you going to talk in a little more detail about some of the programs that we're supporting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. I'm going to be quoting a few of these famous quotes tonight now. And that's why I'm glad to have Dr. Obahat here behind me because he will vouch for, I think, and you can see if he does not approve. Most of us are so aware right now that if ever there was a time for rural health and for us to step up to the plate and get these things done, it's now. And also for veterans, for the first time in a long time, we've got them on the front page. And sometimes when we get on the front page, Washington takes notice. And sometimes they even hear us over in Denver. And so, one thing I want to tell you tonight, though, is especially, we're not separating. We are first, we are veterans, all of us are veterans. Khan knows this, and Richard knows this. But women do need some special place to get these things done. We do have some difficult, different medicals and so forth. And especially, I think it's a little bit harder for women now also, doing many other things, to go over the hill, have to stay over in Denver, and that type of thing. So we're just trying to step in. And we're veterans, helping veterans. And we think this is the time for it. But the one thing is that I keep quoting, all of us in this building tonight, if we eat right, get plenty of exercise and water aerobics, get plenty of sleep, and last but not least, drink plenty of water. So all of us can do that, but most of us are not. We are, we're getting away from that. And so, the reason I'm going to be quoting all of these things now, I have a very special thing to put before you. I am not promising anything, as that is impossible until the bird is in the hand. But I do have good messages coming out of Denver, and I'm applying for a grant. I do not know if we'll get it. But the purpose of this grant is to be a pilot project here in the San Luis Valley. And it's for women, for women's aerobics, the health and so forth. And I have the backing of the medical profession to stand behind us so that we can make sure that this works if we get this grant in hand. The proposal is not written because we don't know yet how many veterans we're going to have. We don't know, and we want to have plenty of money if we do this pilot project. And my hope for the future of the San Luis Valley, it will not be only for women. I'm hoping we will have young people in water aerobics. If we begin to change our lifestyle, we can make a difference. And it's within our grasp. It's not just about money. And I wrote in here that everything that we start to do is, how much would it cost? Water aerobics is a proven thing of helping with stress. What better people to help with stress than our returning veterans from Afghanistan, from Iraq? What better to do that? We've got a swimming pool here. I wish we'd get this grant, and I wish we could start and have that pool filled all day long. And Dr. Obahat has said to me, Dorothy, I think if I could get all of the seniors that are my patients into water aerobics, I could do away with pain medicine. And folks, we believe this. We really believe it. We're not just passing this out as another statement. And the reason we're here tonight, we want to get with you in the beginning. We want you to know what we're doing. We want to be able to report to you. And if we don't get this grant, don't think we're going to quit. But this is what we're working on. And can you imagine, though, if we have to talk about money? How much do you think we could save if we could find a cure for stress? Have you ever seen kids getting in a pool? Have you ever seen the stress go out of them when they get in the pool? Folks, it works. These simple things from our mother works. And can you imagine how easy it is when doctors do knee transplants? Did they put them in water? Do you know how quick they get back on the job? And they do away with pain medicine. They do away. So I'm not just saying this, it's really... So I'm I'm not just I'm not just saying this, it's really it's it's really true. I wrote down just a few of these things, and I promised not to stay all night, but anyway, physically and mentally. And again, Dr. Obah can vouch for this, if seniors are occupied, if they're happy. And how he knows this, I got this man to take his Friday off and go to my aerobics class. And he sat there for the whole class. And our oldest lady there at the moment is 90. I'm only 86, so I'm a kid. But anyway, anyway, he said, I'm watching what they're doing. It's it's proof. It's proof in the pudding. And so I thought, this is the best way to come, just real as we are, and bring the doctor to back us up. A lot of us are his patients, and he's gonna have a lot more to can you handle them? Okay, we'll we'll see what we can do there. Okay, we can if we can if we start now, and what a wonderful idea. Listen, what a wonderful idea. And I think if we work together, we can make it. We could be an example for our nation. We're this little cut-off here, we've got the mountains all around us, we've got the best place in the world to live, but that puts us off from something. If we can get this settled, if we can get our health taken care of down here and this type of thing, we can do things down here that big cities can't do. We would have an advantage over them, okay? And now, this is what we're trying to do. The other thing, you men don't have to listen too closely, but if you educate a woman, you educate the whole family. If if you see what we grandmothers are doing for our grandchildren and our children and so forth, your fathers are so important, and we're not separating, but that's just who we are. Women are caregivers, no matter what we do, no matter what profession or anything else. And we can make a difference in this, okay? And we we also are looking now, thinking about this, and I'm talking to the foundation people about it. Why can't we talk to the insurance company and get a pilot program for this? Get them really involved? And can you know how much money they could save if they help us to stay healthy? And if we start doing this and we start practicing, people are gonna follow. They're really gonna follow. I'm trying to get a year scholarship at a foundation. And so if we do, we'll be back a number of times to give you like a quarter of your port of where we are, so you'll know. Okay, and 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 then the other thing, do you know how much money we could save to treat disease? Because old age is not a disease. Nobody ever said it was. It's not a disease, but if we could save that money to cure a disease, we could turn this whole country around. We really can. So I hope you're with me, and if you're wondering how I feel, I know what it good about water aerobics, the answer is very simple. It's like I told you before, I learned everything I need to know, and my mother's knee on a farm. She taught me that our our lives began in water aerobics, where, as unborn babies, we developed while floating in a perfect environment. And we're still floating in a perfect environment if we want to take the bull by the horns. And I'd like to see if Dr. Obah would have anything to say. I promised him I wouldn't, but I'm not good at that.
Actually, I did watch him for one hour, and I probably could not keep up with that 90-year-old in that pool. Really, it was unbelievable. But yeah, I'm a board certified in geriatric medicine, and I worked in the VA at Ann Arbor. And just working in Brooklyn, Pittsburgh, Ann Arbor, now coming here, I've seen that just for the geriatric population, definitely water aerobics. I know there's very nice facilities in Arizona, and I see 90-year-olds swimming, walking. And it's very important in terms of fall prevention, balance, gait stability, and all of those simple things that we take for granted now, but when you get older, they creep up on you. It's big in terms of hospital admission, readmission, and just the whole outcome. They say the most Medicare dollars that are spent are in the last six months of somebody's life, the most that they'll ever spend. So just I've seen it, I know it works. It's just very simple, very safe, very easy, and like Ms. Brandt was saying, in terms of stress, emotional activity, it's very beneficial. I actually write prescriptions for my patients for Hooper, and they get in for $3. And they laminate their prescription because it can't get wet. And it's, like I say, it's very easy and very, very effective, specifically for elders, but also, you know, I know young kids. Unfortunately, what I've seen, the valley doesn't have a lot of resources in terms of extracurricular activities for a lot of these kids. Parents are working multiple jobs, and I just see that, you know, some kids do end up going to Hooper, they have their Friday nights, they they enjoy, they have fun. And if, you know, we could bring something closer, something available to the kids, I think just for everything, just for their the future outcome and the fact that, like she was saying, pain medication, big, big thing, everybody knows in the valley, it's a very tough, tough thing we're dealing with, and unfortunately, it's the younger population that are really getting the the negative hit from this. And yeah, if we could just decrease that in a conservative way and promote activity, I really think just the whole valley gets a good umph from it all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
And I'd like to leave you with one final message. I never know when to stop. People often often ask me about Alamosa, were you born and raised here? No, I chose it. And and that's that's true. But I did want to say there are two good men in this audience tonight that you might not know about. When we had our our mural over here at 5:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, I thought, oh my God, I forgot, this is a thoroughfare here. We're gonna be out in the middle of the street, and that's not safe. What are we gonna do? So I ran over to the police station, and I asked Robert Jackson, I said, Robert, can you help me? He said, what do you need, Dorothy? And I said, well, I don't think you can do it, but would you try? And I told him, and he said, Dorothy, that's the busiest time of the day, and you know, we just, I don't I don't know. And I said, well, it's dangerous out in the street. And I said, but they gotta be in the street to see the mural for the blessing. And he said, and looked at us, he said, listen, give me an hour, and if I don't call you back, you'll know it's to go. Keep your cellphone on. But Dorothy, it's gonna be hard, because we don't have time, we can't ask people to come in, we can't order them to come in. I mean, these are rules and so forth. And he said, I have to see Public Works. And the minute he said that, I knew we might be in trouble. So anyway, he disappeared, and 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 he didn't call me, so I assumed that everything is gonna be okay. So I came out of the museum exactly at 5:00, and the Public Works guy in charge had people out there, they had put out the things, they had put out the what, horses or whatever they are. Okay, but there was nobody there to put them where they're supposed to be. All of a sudden, there was the man, the big man. You know what a big man is, don't you? But he he was out there doing that, and he was lugging those things all over the place. Exactly at 5:00, here comes across the street from the police station, Robert Jackson. He staggered over there and got out in the middle of the street, and he said, come on, folks, come on, come on, come. It was beautiful. It's beautiful. More people know what your city does that night than ever. They complimented him, they gave him hugs, and we'll never forget him. That's what makes this community, not just health and veterans, it's everybody in this room. We thank you all very much, and just hope I didn't keep you too long, it's late at night. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions?
Counsel, you have any questions, comments?
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you very much, Dorothy, Karen, Doctor. We appreciate your information. Next up is business brought forth by city staff, Public Works. We're gonna have a public hearing on ordinance number one, 2014, an ordinance creating special improvement district 14-1, covering portions of Carroll Edition Number Two with frontage of Ryerwood Drive, Cottonwood Court, and Douglas Drive north of Leroy Street, and ordering the improvements to be constructed and installed as provided herein. Don, you have any comments?
Just administratively, the way the process works, we had the first public hearing prior to the intent to form, which is really functions almost as a notice, the people are going to be affected, that we are considering forming a public hearing, which was followed by a resolution of intent to form a special improvement district. We are now at the ordinance stage, which would create the district. Now, creating a district in itself does not impose the assessments. That is done when we know what the final costs are. That will be a separate ordinance. These are all driven by state statute. So again, we're kind of in the middle of the process. This actually forms the district and authorizes us to go forward in terms of actually orders us, as a matter of fact, to go forward and install the improvements. We also have a bond election in November of this year to fund those improvements. So nothing's gonna be done before the bond election, obviously.
Thank you, Don. And with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number one, 2014. Anyone here to speak in favor or against ordinance number one, 2014? Please approach the mic.
Good evening, City Council. I wish Dorothy would have stayed just a little bit longer. However, Hitler would never have fought a war if he'd known that had Dorothy Brandt on our side. She gets what she wants, and she does a good job. I really do appreciate that lady, so just as a follow-up on that. But now, the the whole point of this is so we can get this developed with the multiple owners that are out there. This is the only instrument that we have really available in order to get this developed. So I'm just asking for your support. There's very little else that needs to be said. It's already been said, we've talked to you about that in the past. I know there's like maybe one or two city councils when they're weren't there at the first one. But this will allow for, once we get this developed, we've got quite a bit of interest in it, that we can get contractors, small contractors, who can then get to work and start building homes. And I think that's really important as well.
Thank you. Would you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Arvin Van Ryan.
For the record.
And my residence is 336 Riverwood. At the moment, I'm living in in Arizona because of health issues with my wife, but otherwise, that's that's my residence.
Thank you, Mr. Van Ryan.
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. And at the early or discussions of this, there were a lot of discussions about maybe helping each other, and Don made the point, eventually, we're gonna know what the costs are and all this stuff, and just try to work it out. This is gonna be a good project, it needs to be done, that area just doesn't look very well. And there's some people that are gonna be against it, but just try to work it out and cooperate. If you can help them out in some kind of way, and the contractors, well, we got some good people. By the way, I want to make a comment on that fourplex down there on Main Street. There was a lot of discussion about that. It looks really good, and it's making the street look a lot better.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else to speak in favor or against ordinance number 2014, number one? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to council. I think this is the intent to form a, no? This is an ordinance creating special improvement district. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll I'll make the motion we approve ordinance number one, 2014.
I second.
I have a motion and a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Start voting, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is a public hearing on ordinance number two, 2014, an ordinance amending Chapter Eight Flood Damage Prevention to the Code of Ordinances of Alamosa, Colorado.
The Colorado Water Conservation Board essentially passed, made new regulations, and as a result of those regulations, sent out an ordinance saying, you will adopt this ordinance, or you will not be eligible for National Flood Insurance Program. This is the ordinance. We had to reformat it to fit our ordinance, the way the paragraphs are numbered and those types of things. Unfortunately, it's part of that process, there were some cross-references that we didn't pick up on. So while there won't be any substantive changes, we do ask that while you hold the public hearing, the actual adoption of the ordinance be deferred until the next meeting, because we'll have to fix those cross-references. The biggest change in this particular ordinance from the last one is that now everything has to be one foot above the base flood elevation, whereas before, everything had to be at or above. So that's a one-foot change. There's also some things that affect basements and crawl spaces. Crawl spaces also have to be one foot above. So for the area that's affected by this ordinance, which is primarily the golf course, the Cottonwood subdivision, most of the homes out there are not gonna be built on slab, there won't be any more crawl spaces out there, I suspect, because from a fractal standpoint, that's really the only effective way you can do it.
Thank you, Don. And with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number two, 2014, and invite anyone to speak for or against this ordinance. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number two, 2014, and bring it to council for a decision.
Again, we we can't actually adopt it, there's some editorial changes we have to make on those cross-references, so that we'll bring it back to you for action, final action at the next council meeting, if that's all right.
But that will not require another public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So, Don, is this one foot above the home that is out there now, like Dr. Kelly's house?
A lot, well, I don't know about Dr. Kelly or any specific home, but most of the homes out there were built under the old ordinance. They will not have to, you know, raise the homes or anything like that. But any new homes built out there
Right.
will have to be one foot above base flood elevation, whereas before, they had to be at or above.
So this is one foot higher?
That is correct.
I had a question also for Don. You know, all those new homes that they're building out there at Regis Chefess, the newer ones that are coming in, is that gonna have any effect?
It's not gonna have any effect on those. Most of those are actually, much of the city is at a flood zone X, which means it's protected to the 100-year flood by the levee. Some of that is actually outside of the X zone I even, it's in what's known as a flood zone B.
Okay.
It's simply because of the elevation of much of that terrain over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Now, you said we need another public hearing?
We do not need another public hearing. It will come back to you for a decision at the next meeting
Okay.
once we've made the editorial changes.
Thank you. Do you all entertain a motion? Don't need a motion?
Don't need a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Next up, our committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? We have a lot of new counselors that have been appointed to new committees, so there's a good possibility that no one has attended. However, we did we did go up to the Colorado Municipal League Legislative Session, and I attended the policy committee meeting. Gentlemen, you have some of the results in front of you, specific to that. I guess this can be considered a committee report, but for the sake of staff and those in the audience, the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee basically makes recommendations to the CML committee itself. And the legislative committee then has lobbyists that attend many of the legislative sessions to either oppose or support many of the bills, Senate bills or House bills that are brought before. Anyway, the policy committee decided or has elected to oppose unless amended Senate Bill 14-145, which will bar municipalities and counties from requiring minimum percentages of irrigated vegetation. minimum percentages of irrigated vegetation. They oppose unless amended House Bill thirteen eleven ninety-three that requires a records policy stating the amount charged for research and retrieval of records in response to Colorado Open Records Act requests. They staff discretion to support. House Bill fourteen twelve seventy-four creates a state income tax credit for business personnel property paid by businesses with less than twenty-five thousand dollars in assessed business personal property. They support anticipated legislation to increase the credit amounts for commercial projects to thirty percent of expenditures under half a million dollars, twenty-five percent for expenditures between a million dollars, a half a million dollars to a million dollars, and for projects that exceed one million dollars, they would qualify for a twenty percent credit. They support House Bill fourteen ten oh two that creates the Water Infrastructure National Disaster Grant, making twelve million dollars available from the State General Fund for need-based grants to repair or replace water and wastewater infrastructure damaged or destroyed in the floods of September twenty thirteen. They support House Bill fourteen eleven oh three that updates the legal investments of public fund statutes regarding ratings requirements for municipal bond investments to create one rating requirement for general obligations revenue and certificates of participation securities. They support House Bill fourteen eleven forty-three that would change assessment of owner-occupied residential storage condominiums to the residential rate. No position on House Bill fourteen eleven sixty that would exempt municipal sludge waste trucks from load restrictions. Oppose unless amended House Bill twelve oh three, which is a joint budget committee bill that authorizes both State General Fund and Highway Users Tax Fund dollars to pay for maintenance and improvements to the statewide digital trunked radio system. Staff discretion to support House Bill fourteen twelve nineteen that clarifies that the maintenance obligation for any bridge over a water structure crossing a roadway does not include construction of a new structure or complete reconstruction or replacement of an existing structure, and that any such cost must be paid by the person or corporation that owns the affected structure. Support Senate Bill fourteen dash zero two-two that allows municipalities to invest public funds in community development financial institutions, CDIFs. Support Senate Bill fourteen oh twenty-nine that creates the Architectural Paint Stewardship Program. The bill requires development of a plan for a state stewardship program that provides for collection of unused paint statewide through a system of retailer and independent collection sites. Support Senate Bill fourteen dash zero four-two that further expands of incentives municipalities and other property tax entities can grant regarding business personal property tax. Oppose Senate Bill fourteen dash zero four-three that would assess an agricultural land, not commercial property, any above-ground growing operation of a greenhouse or nursery business that produces stock for wholesale distribution. And there was some mention of marijuana in here. And that is basically it, for the recommendations that the policy committee will be making to the executive board. And so, with that, are there any questions or comments? Because I know some of our counselors attended the legislative session. What were your, what were your impressions?
For myself, I thought it was really rewarding. We talked a lot about the pot issues in Colorado, fishing Colorado. It amazed me how they're tracking the marijuana, because I asked a question about people importing from outside, how you keep tabs on that, and they tag this marijuana, apparently, the one that's grown here, they tag it, and that way, they know what's being dispensed and what's coming in. There was a gentleman from the FBI, can't remember his name right offhand, but he had a lot of input on a lot of stuff that was really neat. I enjoyed it thoroughly, I got a lot out of it. Of course, we're agreeing, me and a couple guys, but we're making the best of it, and these are really helpful to us, these sessions, so I got a lot out of it.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Thank you very much. We'll go on to staff announcements.
At your last meeting, I gave you a general overview of the recruitment, timing and cycle for the city clerk recruitment for this position. So I sent an email out yesterday to you with a little more detail, that I'd like some feedback from you on tonight. Just to review the timing that I rolled out to you in that email, the position is currently advertised with a deadline of March seventh. We would presumably want to do a first review right away after that, sometime March tenth or eleventh that week, and then soon after that, narrow the selection down. That may be narrowed down to a larger first cut or directly to finalists, that is your call, and then following that, contact those people and set up times for the assessment center. And when I say assessment center, that's typically thought of as interviews, but it's broader than that, and that we're gonna talk about that a little bit, too, on what you want in that. No later then than the week of April seventh, or, I'm sorry, the week of March thirty-first to April fourth would probably, when you would be, when you would be doing that assessment center, and then making a conditional offer, doing the background check and those procedural things the following week. So that puts somebody chosen by mid-April. My last day will be April twenty-second, so there may or may not be overlap there, depending on how much notice the person needs to give to their employer. What I'm asking from you is, what you, what level of involvement do you want as a body as a whole? Do you wanna be involved as a group for this entire screening process, or would you like to have the mayor and perhaps another council member do the first cut and then bring you the finalists? This is your recruitment, and you can do it any way you like, just keep in mind that anytime you meet as a full council, it's an open meeting, and we give notice and do it openly.
Counsel, do you have any thoughts?
I guess, I'd like to see the whole council involved. You know, this is the person that works for us, and even our city manager, that'll be working closely with that individual, so, and like we have with other people that work for the council, it's usually the whole council that's involved in it, it's not just one person or two people. So I like to, personally, I like to see the whole council involved.
And you're, to clarify, that you want them involved in every stage of the process?
Every stage.
Okay.
Yeah. And even if you have to post as a public hearing, it should be open even to the
Sure. It's not a problem to do that, I just need some direction from you on how you'd like to go.
I think we should all be involved in the decision of who to hire.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
I would like to narrow it down as soon as possible, so we could get some overlap in the job. I think meet sometime between March twelfth and the seventeenth, and maybe get interviews set up right away after that.
You wouldn't wanna meet as early as the tenth to do that first cut? The tenth is on a Monday, the deadline falls on a Friday, so the earliest, presumably, you'd want to schedule that first cut review would be Monday, and we can talk about dates and go ahead and get that on your calendar tonight, if you choose to go that route.
Don't we have something already on the tenth?
We do, that's our board appreciation dinner.
Yeah. So, can we do it after the meeting, after the board appreciation?
You could, or before? Yes. Yes, you could.
How many meetings can you get in one day? That would be the question.
You may wanna consider an early morning meeting, too, maybe an early breakfast meeting, or Tuesday evening, the eleventh, looks to be available as far as room space.
Morning? Morning?
I think the only problem there is some of these, some of our council people, the employment and so forth, so, I don't know if, maybe an evening, and I'm kinda throw that back to you guys that are
I would prefer evening, but if we did morning, it'd have to be six forty-five.
This, this first cut may take a fair amount of time. If you get a great number of applicants, you're, what I would recommend that you do is pull criteria off of each application, so you're seeing, looking at qualifications, experience, anything that we're asking for, and desired qualities, and then quantifying that, so you can rank it and pull your finalists. And that's why I thought perhaps you didn't want to do that as a whole council, because it's sort of just a tedious thing to pull, but you're certainly welcome to do that, and we can find time to make that happen.
This next Wednesday, the Wednesday following the tenth, what's involved there?
That is the twelfth, and that is
It's an off Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Do we have anything scheduled for that?
No.
With that, because usually what we try to do is arrange everything on off Wednesdays or Wednesdays, so that gives everybody an opportunity to set their schedule up and so forth. And I don't know for the rest of these guys, I don't know about Greg, if that would be a possibility.
Charlie, an off Wednesday is probably very desirable, especially if it's in the evening, because then all of us can, more or less have already
We can do that.
set up our schedules for that. So that would probably work if council's agreeable. Okay.
What time would you like to start?
About six? Six o'clock, Judy?
Yeah, six, good.
Okay.
On the twelfth?
On the twelfth. So at that meeting, what you'll be doing is looking at the entirety of the application pool, selecting your first cut. You could, you could determine finalists that night. It depends on the volume of the applicants and the quality of the applicants we get. If you choose to make a first cut and then come back later to choose finalists, then we'd need a second meeting for that, and you're, by doing that, you're already pushing your timeline further out. Just be aware of that.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, have you received any applications yet?
I have, I've gotten about five in. It was posted Friday is when it went out.
All right, counsel, so then we'll meet on the twelfth at six o'clock.
Okay, and then from there, we'll make our future decisions on future meetings, but be prepared then to meet sometime the week of the thirty-first, probably. The thing that will depend on that is who you choose as your finalist, not who personally, but what their travel needs are to get here for the assessment. If you choose people who are arriving by air travel, you want to give at least two weeks' notice to those persons, so that they can buy a cheaper airline ticket. So if none of your finalists have that need, then you can move forward a little quicker.
Thank you, Judy. Are there any other reports from city clerk?
Two things quickly. Next week, Tuesday at six o'clock, we'll be having a meeting here to discuss with the residents and property owners on West Eighth Street, some of the design considerations that we're going through on that street. We've got some issues in terms of actual encroachment with fences and other homes that, for whatever reason, were built way too close to the edge of the right-of-way, way too close to the property line. We're not gonna be able to put the full street in there we would've liked, so we're going to look at what the options are, and which things are most important to the people who live there, and who will be driving that street. And that'll affect what our final design will look like before we actually start any work on that. The project is scheduled to start this summer. We're gonna be pushed back a little bit, so we're probably talking towards the latter half of the summer before we actually start any work, because our design work looks like it's gonna be a little more complicated than what we originally anticipated. The other, just a quick status report on the golf course clubhouse on Mulligan's on the Green. They are working on the HVAC system right now, still anticipate finishing up next week. I told the crew that I would buy them once Tuesday of, yeah, let's see, Tuesday the week after next, actually, because it'll be a two-week process, but that means they're gonna have to finish up, have everything done by Monday, so we'll see how that goes.
Mayor, a comment on Don's first subject, on that West Eight alignment. Judy and Don put together a flyer that I will hand carry to each one of those neighbors, I mean, each one of those people in that area. And I think, were you gonna mail something? I saw an email that you were gonna also mail something to those people.
We'll be doing a mailing to all the property owners of records, and, well, as well as everybody that we've got on the billing system. A lot of those people are renters, but we wanna make sure both the property owners and the people who actually live there know about the meeting, and if they'd like to attend.
Okay. Thank you.
Charlie, Don, what's the status on the acquisition of property on Monroe and Eighth on the south side? Is that progressing, or what's going on there?
It is progressing. We'll be making an offer to them based on what they indicated that they wanted, and what the actual property appraisal came out, there are some differences there that we're gonna have to work out.
That's not gonna bring, that's not gonna halt the project, or?
That shouldn't have any effect on the project on West Eighth itself, no.
Thank you, Don. Any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on as the local licensing authority, and we are dealing with Consent Calendar B. We are looking at a special events permit for SLV Arts and Entertainment Committee, Summer Fest on the Rio, June sixth, seventh, and eighth, twenty fourteen, as well as temporary modification of premises, San Luis Valley Brewing Company, June twentieth through twenty-first, twenty fourteen, I believe that should be, Rails to Ales and Roadio Events. Discussion, counsel? Or motion?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion, we approve Consent Calendar B.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
A motion and a second? We'll start voting, hold on a second. Judy?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is council comment. Jan?
Yes, I probably should've said this during the committee reports, but I'd like everybody to know that I will be the liaison between the Alamos School Board, the Adams State Senate, their government, and Trinidad State's student government. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I think a lot of those committees have been assigned, and folks have, anyway, with that, there is no other business, so I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.